Fox, so we will call this meeting order, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andrew, will you do a roll call, please?
Josh Hewitts.
Present.
Rick Gunion.
Present.
Krista Stilwell.
Present.
Mike Reader.
Present.
Mike Kelly.
Present.
You call for the approval of the minutes from the meeting of ten, twenty, twenty-five?
I move we approve the minutes.
Motion by Krista.
Second.
Second by Mike. Patience, Kelly. Okay, Andrew?
Josh Hewitts.
Aye.
Rick Gunion.
Aye.
Krista Stilwell.
Aye.
Mike Reader.
Aye.
Mike Kelly.
Aye. Public participation, I don't, then number one sign, just for your information, right now, we're operating under that, on public participation, under the thing that we adopted, I forget when it was now, but twenty sixteen, there's nothing been adopted since then, it's, and it's posted on the lectern there with the signup sheet, and also, we'll be, it'll be posted at the door, and thinking about posting things, I would like to see if it'd be okay if we would get a bulletin board and put on the wall inside the door, inside the room, because sometimes it's very difficult to read them, if they're on the inside of the glass, it's hard to read them, go on the outside of the glass, it can get weathered, so if we had a bulletin board inside somewhere there, we could post them there, and during business hours, the doors are open, if people come wanting to see them, it would be protected there then better, so I just kind of look for, for you to, let's do that.
For Mike to arrange for a bulletin board inside the room near the door, not unlike that which the city council has in old times.
I'll second that.
Have that motion second. There's roll call then.
Josh Hewitts.
Aye.
Krista Stilwell.
Aye.
Rick Gunion.
Aye.
Mike Reader.
Aye.
Mike Kelly.
Aye.
Mayor, are you ready, or you want to do that now?
No.
Okay.
I'm ready.
You're ready? We're gonna, the mayor has a special thing to talk about today, so come on up and...
Sorry, I'm a little delayed, things were happening in the office. Phil's here. Hi Phil. Do you want to come up here?
Phil loves being the center of attention, what are you talking about?
So, I'm going to begin to talk to you for your, you were honored here a while back, sorry, it's taken me about a month to get here, because you were out, I think, one of the meetings, and then I was gone, so. Whereas, the city of Frankfort is proud to recognize Phil Farrell for his unwavering commitment and dedicated service to the Frankfort community and Frankfort Municipal Utilities. And whereas, Phil Farrell began his commendable career with Frankfort Municipal Utilities on July sixth nineteen eighty-seven, and for over three decades, has been an invaluable asset to the city's infrastructure and services. And whereas, in recognition of his exceptional character, compassion, and commitment, Phil Farrell was honored with the Indiana Municipal Power Agency's prestigious Kerry Vincent Distinguished Line Worker Award on September eighteenth twenty twenty-five. Whereas, this award was created in twenty twenty-one to honor the life and legacy of the late Kerry Vincent, whose four-decade career and passion for public power and the Brotherhood of Linemen set a standard of excellence. And whereas, the Kerry Vincent Award is bestowed upon a line worker who embodies the exemplary traits that Kerry Vincent exhibited in his everyday life, commitment, compassion, character, and community. And whereas, Phil Farrell's acceptance of this esteemed award is a testament to his professionalism, integrity, and outstanding contributions to his field and our community, reflecting the very values the award seeks to honor. Now therefore, I Judith Sheets, Mayor of the City of Frankfort, together with the citizens of Frankfort, Indiana, extend our deepest gratitude and congratulations to Phil Farrell for his remarkable dedication and service, and we commend him for his well-deserved recognition with the Kerry Vincent Distinguished Line Worker Award. In witness whereof, I Mayor Judithy Sheets have here and to set this hand, this third day, this says six day, but third day of November twenty twenty-five. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
It would have been appreciated.
Well, good to have you on this, well, all your guys have done some sport, and advise you have things left to do.
Aye, thank you.
Safety minute?
Phil, you got a safety minute after that?
All right. Start with auditor.
Really just business as usual, helping with budget items, pilot items, reconciliations, prepping for end of year, which is difficult to say that we're there already, but the work begins, so, that's it.
Questions? Karen, billing office.
Pretty much just business as usual, like Andrew, getting ready for the end of the year, beginning of the year, I spoke with Mike earlier this week about creating some kind of video to explain how people can read their bills, so that they can better understand where and how their bill is calculated, so that that information is out there. I plan on putting together a video, I'm still doing research on the best way to do that, and hope to get it out by the end of the year, and also have it in Spanish as well.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Please let me know if I can help you in any way, Karen, because I have a variety of resources that could shoot the video, put it together for us, whatever, so just let me know, I'm happy to help. Okay, great.
This come about because we have so many times, people think that their rates are being changed and all kinds of things, and one of the things we discovered, some months, they may have thirty days on their billing, and another month, they may have thirty-two days on their billing, just because of the way the readings are done and holidays, so...
Or air conditioning, or excessive water.
Yeah. So, anyway, one, one thing I'd like to see addressed, Karen, if you would, is, and it's a small distinction, many, many of the people I talk to, talk about or complain about their electric bill, and what they're complaining about is their utility bill, the entirety of all the charges, including trash collection and whatnot, not electric, electric rates and electric usage, so maybe that's part of the conversation here, that the bill includes these different things, and the bill you see is, is not just utilities per se, right, so?
Yeah.
As a suggestion.
Yeah, no, a lot of people just assume it's electric and water, sometimes they just combine it all into electric, but they don't realize there's at least nine services on their account.
Exactly, exactly, so that, that's, I really like the idea of you explaining this and helping the people understand, there's much more to it than electric utility costs.
Yeah, and there are people that come in and ask, and we explain it to them, of course, you know, total transparency, but this would be nice to get out there, not everybody wants to ask, you know, they just pay it, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Phil, you're up next.
Okay. I pass out the third quarter tree report for the meeting, does anybody have any questions on that? They're due back in town before the first of the year, they have a couple more work packets to finish out this year's work.
You think that they'll need the additional nineteen thousand some dollars by the end of the year?
Yeah.
Yes.
She's got, she's already got all that work planned, and she's usually pretty good about planning and staying right there with that.
Okay, okay, I'm just curious there.
Yeah. So last month, we had all the bucket trucks and hot sticks, and our Derrick, Derrick, Derrick Digger's tested, and we didn't have any dielectric issues on any equipment, so that's, that's a good sign. In the last month, we've assisted the park a few days on the Christmas decorations at the park, gets closer to Christmas, and before the parade will hit the uptown square, that doesn't really entail too much. We had a pole hit on State Road twenty-eight, eight-thirty east during the daytime, October sixteenth, took out the line from three-thirty east on, and the guys isolated, and then fixed the pole, pretty quick turnaround on that, and then we've just been doing routine maintenance on the system, underground services as they come in, it's the new housing additions, and we haven't, knock on wood, I can say this, we haven't had any harvest issues with tractors or combines or semis taking out poles or down guys.
No, just squirrels.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to that here in a minute. Yeah, and then the, now you've mentioned that, in the month of October, we had twenty outages, and I broke it down, thirteen animals, and eleven of them are squirrels, three equipment failures, one auto accident, and then three unknowns, and out of those, five were after hours, eight were on the weekends, and seven was during working hours. And then last week, last Monday, was when we had the squirrel get on the power transformer back here at the sub, and that went out at three oh five, and we had it completely restored by three twenty-three, so eighteen minute turnaround, but I was here, and two of my guys that are on my crew were here, so we got on that pretty quick. But out of that time period, that eighteen minutes, we had three people manning the phones, and just one phone that I know of, I didn't check the other two, but they had over nine hundred missed calls, that's how many people's calling in here, and three people manning phones. Other than that, that's all I got. I would like to point out that you guys caught me on two of my weakest moments, let's not have anything come back to say like, night with the mayor or an input.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah, third time's a charm.
We'll, we'll give you thirty minutes our next meeting, okay?
Okay, so like I said, I appreciate you guys coming down, the day and input, taking time out of your day, and tonight, but I couldn't do it without all you guys and all the help under the other roof.
Well done.
Yes, thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. Shane, you got something for us tonight?
Uh, let's see, the cybersecurity training, Rick, you mentioned, those videos I put out through the month, those seemed to go well, a few of the people I talked to seemed to appreciate them, so, um, let's see, keeping up on support calls, as far as since the last utility board meeting, we've only had four email password resets, I was hoping to report three, but one of them was today, so, um...
When I'm with me.
Me, I'm the problem, it's me.
And then also, I did check with ACCS today about the email migration, they do have a little bit more work to do with the county, is a, just a, some cleanup, but they are going to start working with me some this week, and the goal is to get some testing in place, make sure everything's going to go well before we sit down and decide on a migration date. But then, along with that migration date, I want to give, I don't want to give people too much time, but I want to give them plenty of heads up, that we are going to do something, and allow that to be communicated to everyone, so, as soon as we get there, as far as the testing, then we'll sit down and figure out when we'll do it, whenever we do it, I'd like to be at on Friday, so if there are any bumps that go through the migration, we'll have the weekend to get that taken care of, and I realize that can be a bit of a strain for the electric and water, and wastewater, as far as skater notifications, but I'll make sure they get priority set up as far as email, email notifications, says migration's complete, so, other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Two, two quick things, if I may.
Sure.
On the cybersecurity information you put out, each year, I get inundated, not only from my employer, but the clients that my employer work for, on the topic of cybersecurity and its importance, and how to avoid this, that, and the other, and you did a outstanding job putting information together, putting it out, of course, it's subject to the old adage, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink, so you provided the information, it's up to the user group in the city and utilities to take advantage of that, so good job on that, on that effort. And then, could you clarify for us, when we talk about email migration, the process is migrating the email to what?
So, we'll migrate from ACCS over to Microsoft three sixty-five.
Okay.
So, once that's done, everybody can find their email within the same Microsoft three sixty-five portal they go to today to do, to use for Word or Excel, some people may not necessarily use the portal, but they do use that portal to go change their password and things like that today, so they'll find it in that same location.
So, part of that is, that platform provides this other functionality, like Microsoft Teams.
Correct.
And that has a lot of functionality in it, such as you can audio record meetings and archive those, you, you can take meeting minutes using AI, what's called a large language model to translate the audio from the meeting into a printed draft, meeting minutes, and then, in today's environment, a lot of other companies that we interact with have standardized on Teams as opposed to older platforms, and so that'll be an advantage for us going forward, so thanks for all that.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you, Shane. Jason?
So, maintenance installed for new services, that's actually technically eight there at Meadowbrook, leaving us down to one service left to run, they're at Meadowbrook, and phase one will be complete, we also have been doing our annual flushing, it is completed, started it two weeks ago, we had one main break that happened Saturday on Barner Street, they've also been cleaning out meter pits, helping with meter change outs, and we had three repairs due to meter change outs, just old, old piping in the ground that we've had to replace things. There were a hundred and thirty-three meters changed for the month of October, we also had out at the plant, we had a high-service pump that failed inspection when Peerless was here two weeks ago, operators had had the motor already shut down because it had smelled hot, so that we didn't prolong damage, so we're kind of waiting to hear back from Westlers on what we need to do, or not Westlers, sorry, Peerless on what we need to do there, whether it can be rebuilt, or if we need a new motor for that, the high-service pump. Currently, we're okay with what we're doing, we don't run all six with what our pumpage is, so we're okay with the one being down, still able to rotate, four out like we typically do, and we have still a backup, what, compared to what we usually run, so we usually run max at four, we have a fifth, and our sixth one is down right now, so, still in good shape.
Is that where our, something like this, in this occasion, that would revert back to our firm disaster?
Correct, yeah, so...
Just in case that happens.
Yes, and so, it would take more than one high-service pump though, going down to get to the point of where it would be considered a large piece of equipment then, it would probably take two, because we would be at that point. So again, just waiting to see what they, they come back with on that. Pumpage, our lowest day was October eleventh, at two-point-five-eight million gallons, our highest day was three-point-nine-six million gallons, October second, and we're still averaging, like always, three-point-four million gallons a, a day. Watson's has submitted the request for substantial completion, Lucas from Westlers and Josh have been going through, doing the punch list items, so that we can get those taken care of before any of that is complete, and then I do have a task order that is coming up for the design on specs for the potential maintenance buildings, I spoke to Westlers, the engine, or the builder typically goes through an engineer there in Lafayette, I had Westlers in the building anyway, so I just went ahead and went through them instead of waiting to go through Lafayette, they're putting a task order together for those barn specs, should be ready next week sometime.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Question?
Thanks, Trace.
You're going to email those to the board members?
Wastewater.
Please, yeah, thank you.
All right, our favorite time of year is complete land application, I'd like to report that it went almost flawlessly, I'd also like to publicly thank the county for helping us haul our solids out to the field, yeah, the county helps every year, and without them, it would be a struggle to keep up, so I want to make sure they know that, we, we publicly thank them. Also, the guys at the plant, they clean the Southwest Lagoon and both North Lagoons, they also cleaned all the lift stations, sewer maintenance helped with that, and we got them all winterized, maintenance guys and the plant guys also did some ADA work at the lagoons, there were eight sewer call, or sewer calls, two of them on us, the rest on, on the property owner, we replaced the ring and lid on Barner, we repaired a manhole on Sixth Street, we did a storm project on Armstrong, and we did a lateral repair on Clay, so we've been kind of busy.
Sounds like it.
Yes, you have. That's all I got.
No questions. Thanks, PJ.
Yeah, thanks, Rick, Lagoons, and I think PJ mentioned something about it, but things really look, they've really done a good job of doing some of those ADA things out there, you want to talk about some of those a little bit?
Uh, yes. For anyone who, who has not been out to Lagoons lately, you might not recognize it, it is fantastic, it's been completely cleaned up, and by that, I mean, where we had a variety of trash containers of different size and color and design, we now have one standardized type of trash container about the whole premises, where we had before, a number of benches that, that faced out into the pond area for people to enjoy and sit on, and the dirt in front of the benches had eroded away and become somewhat unsafe, our team of people put down crushed limestone and other material, packed it down, and now it's, it's safe and inviting in front of those benches, and I could go on, but I won't, but I want to recognize the people involved, because people are our most important asset, no matter what we do in the board, what Todd does as the general manager, it's really down to our people doing the day-to-day work, so let me recognize the following individuals, if you could bear with me, Daniel Hart, Matt Woods, Andy Smith, Greg Brown, Terry Timmons, Chris Black, Brian Caesar.
Caesar.
Caesar, sorry, Adam Myers, Chris Wright, Justin Spears, Rob Thomas, PJ Whittaker, Todd Corey, thanks to everyone for the, the work that was done out there at Lagoons, I understand we did not have to twist anybody's arm, they were very happy to go out there and do the work, and it is, it is outstanding, so it gives us a good wrap-up to this year's maintenance operations out there, and puts us in a good place for the coming winter season, so thanks to everyone involved, appreciate it.
It was a really a nice change of pace for those guys and to get out there and to do that, but when, when they got started and I made it out there the next day, and then as they continued on for what, about two and a half days, right PJ, it just kept looking better and better, I mean, I was never expecting the results that they came up with, but they, they done a tremendous job.
They went above me on, because the initial task at hand was to remediate the ADA compliance findings.
Yes.
Of which there were a number of compliance findings, but they went above me on that, and just did a tremendous amount of work, including taking out some, some areas that it appeared, where we had some, the appearance of a boat ramp, and of course, we don't allow boats in, in the pond water, so it was kind of an attractive nuisance that was eliminated, and it is, again, it's outstanding, so we can, we can go on from there, in terms of next year's plans and so forth, but thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Timer manager?
Well, Chase had to, to run off, but he, I was, I was hoping he'd still be here, because on that water main break that he mentioned on Saturday, there was three of the guys came in, and it was not a good situation, and I was so impressed with the three individuals, it's Cody Robey, Dave Johnson, and John Swackhammer, the work that they'd done, the way they communicated, they didn't get excited, when, I mean, literally, the street collapsed underneath it, and when they started getting, when they got the water level down, there was also a gas line running there with a concrete, it turned out that there was a sewer tap, a water tap, a gas line, and a sewer line, let alone the water main, right there with them, and they looked at it and everything, and Cody says, do you think we should call Vectren, and I said, I think that'd be a good idea, so before any, they stopped work, Vectren came in, clamped things off, thanked them for calling them, but I can't say enough on how impressed I was with those three guys on Saturday.
So that reminds me of the phrase, you might have seen some signage like this, we don't have it here, to my knowledge, safety is no accident. Safety is no accident.
Yeah.
And that's a good example.
Yeah. Safety starts with you. But like, I was ecstatic. I called Mike this morning, and I told him, and then the guys were over there doing some work on the road because of the problem. And I took the time to drive over there and thank all three of them personally as well. But it was quite the scene. It really was. And when I saw that gas line, I thought, oh, here we go again.
Here we go.
But the concrete was, it was from a patch that had been done, and the water, the water line had a hole in it the size of a baseball. And when, like I said, it just washed out. And it was just hanging down over the top. But after they got it pinched off, they went around with the backhoe, and they took their time and leveraged it back, and not a single rock fell on that gas line. They were so careful. But it was dead at the time too, so. So, and from there, I was at an MPa meeting on Friday, and we are getting hit with a two point five percent increase for power next year. Which is better than the four point nine that we had last year. But it actually isn't as bad as a two point five for us, because since you guys agreed and the council agreed to do the contract extension, the debt service adder that we were paying, it actually takes us down to slightly lower than two percent, because that's coming off of us January one. So it's not a, it's not terrible. I mean, we've had worse, because we've had double-digit increases before. So, and with that number, our tracker will fluctuate slightly, but it's not as bad as I was expecting at this point in time. But that debt service adder makes a big difference as well.
So off the top of your head, Todd, out of the ten similarly situated communities in Indiana, the last I knew, our electric rates were the second lowest or third lowest of the ten.
I believe they're the second.
My recollection. So we'll stay in that relative area for the next coming year, it sounds like.
Yeah, they had a graphic up the other day, Rick, up there in a course, Duke, Wabash Valley. They had Nipco up there, which holy moly. It was like Mount Everest on the peak for Nipco. There was one other community, one other provider, they just had the providers up there, that was close to us, but they were, or close to what we're paying on their supply line. And it was probably about one and a half to two times higher than what our base rate is. But the other big boys are, I don't know how people do it, that have those services, but yes, we are very, very low still. And we'll continue to be there. You know, with the increases, the other ones are looking at stuff, and then you see a two point five percent, it's pretty phenomenal, actually. Okay, and then Mike, you asked me at our last meeting to bring this stuff up about pilot.
Yes.
And I have these to show. You want to pass this? This thing will show where our calculations come up, and then to the right is what we are currently paying in all the departments. And wastewater is is gonna take a pretty good hit of about eighty-eight thousand dollars more than what they are paying, have been paying, but the other ones are all considerable lower. And the formula, it's actually a pretty, pretty simple formula. It's your assets times your tax rate divided by a hundred. The only one that is different is the electric. You divide it by, then you divide it by three for electric. But the other ones are just straightforward.
So if I'm interpreting this right, in the current year, our total pilot payment to the city of Frankfurt is just right at one hundred thousand dollars over the calculated pilot maximum amount. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I think the board needs to consider how we move forward in that, given that situation. I don't think we need a decision tonight, but.
We're gonna have to have a decision pretty soon, because coming up on the end of the year.
So if we could put that on the agenda for the next meeting, I think we need to get down to brass tacks, but I think we need to kind of absorb this first, in my opinion. Not act hastily.
It will be on the next.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Uh huh.
I just have one.
Okay.
Way that these were calculated is the same way that everyone has pilot programs are supposed to calculate.
Yes. Exactly.
Okay.
Now, there are, the only difference is, is the tax rate.
Yes.
You know, like the one I received from Crawfordsville, their tax rate's like four dollars and thirty-two cents or something like that, instead of two dollars and thirteen cents, so. Yeah, good luck with that. That's the only number that will change, is the tax rate. Everything else is the same.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. The, we did start, in our morning meeting today, we started looking, or some of the departments have started looking at their budgets, making some of the adjustments and stuff that we look at, and then we're gonna, I'm gonna have individual meetings as the week goes on here, start hammering those out, and then when we get, if we, I think they're, from what I've already done, not gonna be too terrible, because they've been pretty solid the last couple of years, but we will be prepared to have a good, I'm not even gonna call it a rough draft, a good draft for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Since we're talking about budget, I want to bring up that insurance
Okay.
thing. Rick and I are the insurance representatives, and we received, we received an email, I think Judy got it too, about the increases and I gave them a copy, but you said that this was for us, it's a twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollar increase for the insurance. Is that, is that what you told me?
Yeah, because if you go down to line one, two, three, four, five, six, on the fixed cost, three hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars, it's actually a six point four percent increase on that number.
That's where the twenty-five thousand is?
Yeah, yes, Josh. So that number would have been, what, three fifty-seven, somewhere in that area last year, three sixty-seven.
Is that information, is last year's available?
I tried to get ahold of Mark Bauer to get this from last year, so as soon as I get it, I will send it to you.
That's okay, could you just explain that the only increase was in that?
Yeah.
Particular line. Can, sorry. Ask questions when you're doing. It says additional variable cost monthly, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. What represents an additional variable cost?
I believe, but don't quote me, but I'll verify it. I think it's a health clinic. Josh.
Okay, but the health clinic is listed in its own line?
Oh, it is. You're right. I don't know. I will ask that question when I get ahold of Mark about the form like this from last year.
Okay.
Is that okay? I don't see the admin fees anywhere on the other lines.
Okay. And then so the first column here where it says total is P E P M, per employee per month?
Correct.
Okay. So, employee EE contributions, does that stand for employee contributions?
Yes.
So it's about ninety-three percent to seven percent?
Yeah, pretty close.
Okay. 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 I was just curious what those numbers represented, or, and if there was discussion regarding, to me, this, I don't know the full details of it, but essentially, employee contributions aren't changing for twenty-six, correct?
That is correct.
Deductibles, any of that. Was there concern about that?
There was, I would just say, there was concern about a couple of things. One of them was contributions. Contributions have been pretty stable for quite some time. And the insurance has been going up. So contributions may have to be looked at in the future.
And that's kind of where I was going. I'm certainly not advocating for more hardship on employees, but if this steady as she goes, you know, and keep, you know, I think there's a cliff coming. And because of national politics, it's gonna get even worse. And we're gonna see a huge increase in health insurance premiums in twenty-seven.
In the discussion, we also talked about increasing the stop loss, which would have, it had, actually didn't have a kind of effect that I thought it would have, really.
It had a negative effect, because then the cost would have went up nine point two percent instead of six point four percent with that, which makes no sense whatsoever.
It didn't.
Right. And maybe. And I don't have a good understanding of how our insurance premiums, or I'm sorry, claims are calculated or self-insured. I guess, big picture wise is what I was saying. If all of a sudden the market is flooded with uninsured people who are seeking medical care, it only stands to reason to me that there's something bad coming very soon. So I didn't know if that was even on the radar, or trying to blunt the, you know, because instead of, instead of arcing down, it's gonna go like this.
Yeah, well.
Employees are gonna get hammered.
It's interesting you say that, because when we had a meeting, what was it, about four or five weeks ago, there were some different companies that was actually putting something together, but none of them had a firm offer. They were still looking at things. When it came down to it, they all dropped off, and Hantum was the only one. I mean, really, right now, they're our only choice.
Right, right.
And they're big, and they can bully people out for a while, because nobody else is interested.
I know.
Which is, one of the reasons why we brought this up tonight, is they would like to be able to start enrolling people at the end of this week. So I would look for a motion, even though you still have some questions, and we'll get those questions answered. I would like to have a motion that we approve the plan that's presented to us, and that we allow them to start enrolling employees.
Is this in your recommendation?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. I do have a follow-up comment to what Josh was alluding to, if I may.
Go ahead.
Second the motion first. We're faced with what's called in statistics, the law of large numbers. I hate to say it that way. It sounds rather abstract, but put it in layman's terms, we have been living on borrowed time. As it turns out, it's been very fortunate, we've not been faced with large increases. When, if you look at statistically speaking, most insurance programs have, we have not, and I can't not explain why. Earlier this year, during some of our committee meetings on insurance committee topics, we had discussed some potential actions we could take to mitigate the risk associated with this cloud in the future that we're faced with. And it was decided, without going into the detail, that we would take none of those, would make none of those changes that would mitigate the risk. However, I think, speaking for one, as one board member, I think early in the next year, next calendar year, we need to put on our agenda a work session for the purpose of determining what, if anything, we will do going forward, because the last thing we want to have happen to our employees is the situation you alluded to, that all of a sudden, lightning strikes and our rates are astronomically increased overnight. And with the trend toward personalized medicine, unique treatment options for classes of drugs that are, one treatment is in the million-dollar range, and you need two treatments a month, and that entire situation is vastly different than it was five years ago, ten years ago, it didn't exist. Now, it's the trend, it's what is coming out in the health treatment community. So with this propensity for some extremely expensive treatments, our history of having a couple instances of that, some of the things we need to think about are our participation in the health clinic, our employee rates and fees, and our covered person rules for who is covered, who is not covered. And again, in all fairness, I'm just like you, I don't, I don't want to see our employees have any hardships coming forward, going forward. But I'm a realist, I'm a practical analytical person, and again, we've been living on borrowed time. And so we need to get ahead of game and make some hard decisions. It won't be easy, but I think we're obligated to have those discussions along with, including Todd here, and see where we go next. We may or may not be in agreement with the city administration or the county, and I say that with regard to the health clinic. But even if they, and I hate to, I don't want to paint them in a bad light, but if they choose to sit on their hands and ride it out and hope for the best, I'm not that type of person. So that's where I stand as one person here.
I can appreciate that. And I certainly didn't mean to take anything away from or to disparage the work that's already been done this year by the committee. I was curious, and usually I have a lot of questions, and how's this a good a time to ask?
I'll get you answers.
I would not, and I would, I'm fine with going ahead with this. This is your guys' recommendation. And me and Johnny come lately here, I'm not gonna try to stay on the way of it, so.
If I don't hear from Mark yet tonight, I'm sure I will tomorrow, Josh.
Well, I mean, at the beginning of the year, it's fine, I mean, this is, essentially, we're good.
And I would like to take this opportunity, Josh, to express to our chairman that should our chairman feel inappropriate, I would encourage him to name you as the insurance committee representative in my place next year, because I think you do an outstanding job, so. Thank you for stepping forward.
Look at that, Josh. Look at you go, bud.
I was thinking the same thing, or I was thinking, taking my place.
I'll quit asking questions.
Well, you can't vote nominate it.
I did. Thank you.
Okay. I'll take that into consideration very strongly.
Under advisement.
We have a motion on the floor, and we need a vote.
Someone second that, right?
Yeah, Rick.
Yep.
Josh Hewitz?
Aye.
Krista Stowell?
Aye.
Rick Gunyon?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye. I'll tell Cheryl that it's okay to start.
Then I have one more thing. On the parking lot list or things to cover, we have the vehicle inventory, and it is done. It's all in Silversmith. Problem is, if you try to run a report, the best we know right now, it comes out to be like two hundred and forty-some pages. So we're trying to shrink that down or put So we're trying to shrink that down or put it on thumb drive or whatever, but with, the inventory is done and we know, and all, all departments are um standardized. So we're just trying to figure out how to get that and get it smaller at this point in time. Okay?
We appreciate that.
Do we, um, perhaps you can ask Shane, do we have a application called Crystal Reports?
I have no idea.
It's a tool that you can load data into and then pick the right parameters to get a subset of data. Okay. Okay. I'm sure there's other, other tools, but.
Yeah, there's something, something we're gonna be able to do, or we'll contact Silversmith to have them come up with a way out of their software to get it smaller.
Any other questions for Todd right now?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Well, you had the claims in your packet. Uh, any additional claims, Andrew? Any questions about claims? If not, will I entertain a motion to approve the claims?
I would like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second please.
I'll second that.
Rick and then Krista? And then we'll vote.
Josh Hoots?
Aye.
Krista Stilwell?
Aye.
Rick Gunion?
Aye.
Mike Reader?
Aye.
Mike Kelly?
Aye.
We've taken care of the unfinished business that, uh, from prior meeting, we talked about pilot. We'll be doing more with that at the next meeting. Uh, the broad, he talked about the budget project somewhat in his report that it's still under, under review by the department chairs. Uh, new business, preliminary. I've invited uh Dan Sheets to the next meeting to talk about how we can be of assistance with the, some of the uh stormwater uh funds through mostly in-kind service with uh, with his uh job of getting the water out of, out of Clinton County, basically. And he's gonna be here to present that. Uh, and I think that's something that we've been talking about. We started talking about that quite some time ago. But uh, we'll get some more information on that and probably be making a decision on that.
Can I make a comment there, Mike?
I don't have anything else. Has anyone?
Can I make a comment, please? So a, as you indicated here on the agenda, um, in, in addition to potential in-kind work that we could potentially do to help uh Dan in his mission, uh, as you recall, the, the drainage board, the Clinton County Drainage Board, which is none other than the county commissioners at this point, uh, approved, I believe earlier this year, um, a significant increase to each property owner in the Prairie Creek watershed for the purposes of maintenance and ongoing improvements in the watershed. And because uh, as you look at the Frankfurt stormwater system, and you think about how the stormwater, rainwater uh, get uh uh, collected and, and sent out of our community, out of the city of Frankfurt, uh, we own storm drains, we maintain storm drains. And each and every one of those storm drains, to my knowledge, drains into a waterway. Some of them are Prairie Creek, within the city limits, frequently they, they are Prairie Creek. And so as it turns out, Prairie Creek is actually part of our stormwater management system that we rely on for the city to not get inundated during heavy rains and so forth. And in the past ten years, we had two occurrences of a hundred-year rain event, which uh statistically is, is very possible. It's, it's somewhat unlikely, but it did happen. And so I would, I would propose, and, and just for consideration, in addition to in-kind work, that we, we should, as, as utilities, pay a fee to, to partially subsidize Prairie Creek watershed maintenance activities that are conducted by the, uh, under, under Dan Sheets, the county surveyor. And thereby um, help to offset the increased cost that the property owners in the watershed have been assigned to bear because of the, the vote and decision earlier in the year by the drainage board, if that makes sense. So I think it's our obligation and an opportunity to allocate some funds in next year's budget. And, and that was the basis for me sitting down with Dan uh about three months ago and, and kinda proposing that idea. So I'd like, I just wanted to share that with the other board members and we'll, we'll go from there.
And I know uh, when I talked with Dan, he, he's gonna have a, I think he'll come with a plan. How we can, how we can uh partner with him, so.
Yeah, very good.
Another thing that I haven't, it's in the holdover items, is the handbook. I took the time this weekend to go and look at this. There's a lot of the uh, Krista's super job. But if you, and you all have this, I believe, but uh, for the most part, it's almost straight out of the city handbook with reference made to utility service board instead of city of Frankfurt. And then they uh, then there's some parts in it that are um, unique to our situation. When I went through it, I found, I find that most of the things that we're gonna have to do is a, is go through this and approve the things that are unique to us. And then there's some things that are kinda ambiguous that need to be looked at. So I encourage you to start looking at that because I would like to have that finished by the end of the year. So that we can send it on to the Alicia and human resource people to uh, get it finalized. So uh, kinda giving you some homework, folks, but that's the teacher in me. So um, you're busy, right? Clarence?
And if it's, yeah, and Josh, did you get a copy of that?
I did, yes, thank you.
Cause there is a color code system to it of how what was added, what's unique to us, what's holdover, that sort of thing. Um, to hopefully speed up the process for you, unless you feel like reading the handbook from front to back and figuring it out for yourself.
And, and some of the things are in a different order from the other.
Yep.
And then, so you have to kinda flip back and forth, but it is doable and I, I think it's something that I appreciate her getting that to this point that it is right now very much because it, it, it was a lot of work, I'm sure. So anything else for the good of the evening?
Just, just a quick comment on that, if I may. Um, and, and not to be a naysayer, but I have a little different point of view. Uh, Krista did an outstanding job putting that together. I, I do agree. Uh, we do have to recognize there's a cost uh to bear for us to maintain a separate employee handbook. And, and because um, technically speaking, uh, the utility board do not have any employees. The employees of the utilities are employees of the city. And because we don't have an HR department, nor do we want one, we rely on the HR department services of the city. And I could go on if I won't. I'm just not quite yet sold that we need a separate employee handbook for employees that we don't have. And, and another part of the rationale here is if we look at the city handbook for employees, there are spatial classes of employees like Frankfurt Police Department employees, Frankfurt Fire Department employees, that have spatial rules and situations that apply to them only, partly because of state statute and other reasons. Uh, pensions and so forth. Uh, and, and on the other hand, they all rely on one HR department. Um, I'm not so certain that we could position the utilities as a separate class of employees, not unlike the police and fire departments, but the, call it the utility department, and then address not only our employees, but our union members that are all, again, employees of the city, not employees of the utility board. And, and my last, the, the last supporting rationale is because we technically don't have any employees, I think it's a misnomer to say we have an employee manual. Cause we don't. Even if we approve this, they're not our employees. So food for thought, maybe I'm an outlier and you tell me to go away and sit down and be quiet, that's fine. I just want it for the record. I just, I'm not quite sold that two, two manuals into the future is, makes the most sense. We don't have the head count to maintain it. We can barely get it reviewed and we've been working on it for nine months now. So that's, that's my comment. And, and again, all due credit to Krista for leading the way on this. Great work, but uh.
One of the, I think one of the problems in that is that with the, if you look in the city's handbook for the, the things for the fire department, the police department, are rela, are relatively few number in number and none of them are very uh, long in, in what they say. There are lengthy discussions, lengthy uh entries. But in our case, some of ours are, we have, it, it would be, it would be the, whatever color, I can't remember, but those things would have to be inserted into the city's handbook for our, for those employees that are with us. And it's considerably more, I believe, than what the fire department or the uh, police department have.
That, that would be one approach. I don't dispute that. The other approach would be that there's a city handbook that applies to everyone. Appendix A applies to the fire department. Appendix B applies to the police department. Appendix C applies to the utilities. Which, which is, from a state sta, statute standpoint, it's the, the department of utilities. We, we being a, a department of the city.
And then that may be, maybe have.
Again, I don't wanna argue the point, but I, I, I'd like to discuss the pros and cons of having two manuals and the upkeep of that.
Okay, we will.
And I also would challenge, to the extent our rules and expectations are different than the city rules and expectations for employees, I'm not sure why that would be. We all, we all are public service employees and uh, even though many of our people uh earn a higher income for, for a job due to job qualifications, special, special skill sets and training, um, for the most part, I'm not sure I can justify why, you name it, our vacation days or holiday, why would they be different? So I, I'm just, I'm kinda challenging that, that status quo thinking there.
Okay, well, that's all, all for discussion in the future.
Thank you.
Just real quick to clarify, department heads have this handbook and have had the chance to look through it and make recommendations or suggested changes? Is that correct?
We still, it's, it's been sitting at the board level.
I thought that, I thought we gave it.
Send it out?
I thought we sent it.
Okay.
And I thought that what we left off was that you guys were gonna go through it, provide feedback to Krista for any changes.
Yeah.
Cause I think that's certainly a necessary step.
Thank you.
It's one of the bigger tasks we had on our platter this year. And so it's no surprise we're not quite done yet.
No, no.
A lot of work done. Again, thanks to Krista for leading the way, so.
Hand, handwritten book revision at Clinton County took eighteen months. So, I mean, it's no small task.
Well, we're ahead scheduled then.
You are. Or we are, yeah.
If anything else, other than, if there isn't, we'll call for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.